Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, and the time is 7:00 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capel City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited and welcome to join us. Thank you very much.
The time is 7:01. We're here for the work session.
Thank you.
Well, we have two items on the agenda tonight, and that is hence our seven o'clock start time. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Item A is the discussion of the agenda items. Anybody have any questions or comments or points about the agenda?
Yeah.
Bijou?
Number C. I just want to know more details about Harley-Davidson motorcycles.
Okay, Casey?
Uh, oh. What's the question? What do you mean?
So, why are we choosing Harley-Davidson versus others?
Versus what? I'm sorry.
Versus others.
Others, okay.
I don't know.
We have Harley's now, right?
Yes. We have Harley's now, correct, yes. And we have a service contract with them, and they have the extended warranties and a lot of things that support these vehicles and the police outfit with them.
So these are new ones that we have. I see a list of items, so I wasn't sure if it's a brand-new motorcycle we are purchasing, or is it?
Yes, there are four new motorcycles that are being purchased as part of the replacement fund. They're scheduled in the replacement fund.
So how many Harley-Davidson bicycles we have?
Four. Four, and we're replacing those four.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Rianna?
Can I add to your question real quick? And maybe as a clarification, correct me if I'm wrong, but are we also getting some that have, I don't know if you call it like extra protection or shield, but it has that. Can you, maybe that might also help?
No, the reason I ask is, I know there are least expensive ones. Harley-Davidson is one of the expensive motorcycle, right?
Correct.
So I was wondering why the expensive versus less expensive ones?
So I don't know the answer to that one. I can find you. Mike, do you have?
I do not. My fault.
They're made in America.
So maybe let me ask there, and then you can jump in. But I know at one time we had BMWs. When did we switch to Harley's? So how long have we had Harley's?
Maybe you can answer that. I don't really answer that one. I think we got rid of BMWs.
In a while.
Around 2012, 2015.
And so we've had Harley's since then?
Right.
Right, okay.
Because the Harley's are much less expensive than the BMWs.
Correct, yes. So I kind of wanted to go through that. I remember having BMWs. We've gotten Harley's, and so we're, we've had good success with Harley's, maybe?
Yeah, Harley's are really well-built bike. That's why most police departments ride Harley's. And the new, they don't make the ones that we ride now anymore, and the new ones offer a lot more protection for the riders. And so that's why we're staying with Harley. One of the main reasons.
Help me out is, does not every motorcycle manufacturer manufactures a police version? Is that correct?
I would, I would assume that's correct, but I don't know.
I believe that is correct, yes.
I'm only aware of Kawasaki making a police interceptor.
But to your point, I agree.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Any other questions on the agenda tonight? All right, let's go on and move on to item B, which is project bidding and delivery presentation. Mr. Garza.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you. Yes, tonight this item is a discussion on typical types of major construction projects that we manage and how we deliver each type. Now, there is no direction or action being requested this evening. So two of the major types of projects that are managed through the Public Works Department. One is considered our typical public works civil project, which includes roadways, utilities such as water, sewers, storm drain, traffic signals, et cetera. The other are facilities projects. These include buildings and structures associated with them, such as the service center and the fire station. They have different procurement requirements and delivery methods based on what is allowed by state law. This, this slide shows the most commonly used types of delivery method that are available by state law for us to use. Competitive bidding is what we use on all public works projects over 50,000, as well as some facilities projects, mostly maintenance-type projects like HVAC replacement, roof replacement, et cetera. This method requires choosing the lowest responsible bid. There is also competitive sealed proposals, which is similar to competitive bid, however, it's mostly for rehab, alterations, or repair facility. This method is similar to above, but allows the contractor to be selected based on qualifications, experience, project approach, and not just on price. These are, and this is only, competitive sealed proposals are only allowed for facilities projects and not public works projects. Design-build is another method. For Capel, design-build would only apply to facilities projects because state law does not allow this method for public works projects when a community has less than 100,000 in population. The only time we can use this is for public, for public works projects is in an emergency, which we have done a couple of times, both related to string bank erosion. We typically do not use this method for facilities. Construction manager at risk, or CMAR, is what we most recently have used on the service center renovation project and Fire Station 4 and Fire Station 5. This is the most, this is mostly used with new construction of facilities or major renovations. This allows the construction manager to be involved early in the project and provides input in the design process. They take on their risk for project delivery with a guaranteed maximum price. The CMAR is selected based on qualifications, experience, and project approach through a request for proposals process. Job order contracting is another method, and this is typically used for maintenance, repair alterations, renovations of a facility for recurring work where time and quantity are indefinite. Examples of this are electrical work, tile replacement, carpet, door hanging, repaint, and rest. Now, this slide shows our typical public works process for a construction project. A project is identified through various ways, from council direction, five-year planning process, priority based on condition, risk, need, et cetera. And then approximately every three years, we advertise for a request for qualifications or RFQ for full-service civil engineering firms. We then select a design firm from that list of qualified firms based on the project needs. By state law, this is considered a professional service, so we cannot bid this type of service out. We develop a scope and negotiate a fee. As part of the scope, the design engineer performs soils testing to aid in their design. Once the design is complete, any projects that will be over 50,000, we then advertise in the local paper and online for a minimum of two weeks and bid the project out. Again, by state law, we are required to select the lowest responsible bidder. We then check references in the lowest response, of the lowest responsible bidder and bring that contract to council for award. At the same time, we also select a qualified geotechnical engineering firm to perform materials testing. This is also a professional service that cannot be bid out. These contracts will be presented to council for award if they are over $50,000. Then we begin construction. And once the project is completed, we require a two-year maintenance bond, so prior to end of the two-year period, we perform an inspection of the project. If there are any deficiencies identified, the contractor is responsible to repair them. An example of a recent project that you approved is the North Freeport Parkway traffic signal. The next, this next slide shows the facilities project process. This is a little bit different, and it allows for more flexibility based off the types of projects. Similar to the public works project, the projects are identified from council direction, five-year planning process, priority based on condition, risk, need, et cetera. Depending on the scale and type of the project will determine the approach we take on the delivery method. In this case, it's typically an architect that is selected based on qualifications, and they usually hire their civil engineer, design engineer, or they have civil engineer, design on staff. Similar to the public works projects, the design engineer performs soils testing as part of their scope. If a CMAR is selected, then the, the CMAR method is selected, then the contractor is selected based on a request for proposals. And this is, again, typically used for new construction. I'll discuss that a little bit further on the next slide. If competitive bidding or competitive sealed proposal is used, we will advertise for a minimum of two weeks and then select the contractor based on best value. Once the contractor is selected, then we award the contract at council, excuse me. Then we award the contract at council, similar to the public works project, and we also select the geotechnical firm for materials testing based on qualifications as well. Then we begin construction. Once construction is complete, there's a warranty for new construction of facilities, and it varies based on the project and contract. An example of the competitive bidding for a facilities project is on the agenda, consent agenda tonight for the town center remodel. Now onto the CMAR. This slide shows the CMAR process, which is what we have used most recently on the service center, Fire Station 4 and Fire Station 5. It is mostly used, like I said, with new construction of facilities or major remodels. This allows the construction manager to be involved early in the project and provides input in the design process. They take on their risk for the delivery with a guaranteed maximum price. The CMAR is selected based on qualifications, experience, and project approach through a request for proposals process. An example, again, is, is most recently was the service center project. Some upcoming projects that you will see in the near future are, example of competitive bidding is the Royal Lane Road Reconstruction Project, and then another CMAR project, the Justice Center renovation project. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mark had one.
Yeah, can you go back two slides? Right there. So CMAR, you said they're selected by RFP or RFQ?
So it is an RFP. So we, we, we select the architect first and then the, it has the schematic design.
Right. So their, their fee is actually presented to you as well as their qualifications?
Correct.
Thank you.
Bijou?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm having a difficult time understanding. If we select one architect firm and move forward with them, we don't know the, the price difference versus, you know, who's bidding on the marketplace for the same job or same type of engineering?
By state law, we cannot shop professional services. We can't bid out professional services. We, what we do is we negotiate a scope. So once we get a scope from a consultant, whether it's an engineer or an architect, we, we look at the scope, we identify what the needs are, and then we, they provide us the proposal with their fee. Now, if we, if we, if we don't, there has to be a legitimate reason why we feel like we don't, we can't use them, but we cannot go to another consultant, ask them for a fee, and then come back and use this consultant based on state law. So professional services does not allow us that flexibility.
And the reason why in public work, you don't want the lowest bidder to, to be designing your buildings? You want to have the most qualified person or firm doing that. And so that's why it's only done by, you know, qualifications versus fees.
So we do list the qualification, right?
Correct.
I'm sure in the marketplace, there are many agencies and companies that are qualified.
Correct.
To bid on Capel's project.
So when we do, like I said, every three years, we issue the request for qualifications to, we advertise that to the Metroplex and to, even, it goes across the country. And we get firms submit their qualifications to us with all their capacities, their, their, their project managers and all types of projects they're qualified. And so when we have a project that we're going to bid out or that we're, that we need to get designed, we will go through the qualifications and identify which firm meets the needs of the project that we're looking at based off their qualifications.
One of the things, Mr. Matthew, too, you will find that there are only certain people that will take on these public works projects. There's a number of firms, and you see, I see the same firms that bid Capel's job, bid the Duncanville job, they bid the Allen job, they bid the Richardson job, because of the requirements to comply with all of the things that we as a city have to do. Not everyone can build a road. Not everyone can build a fire station. Not everyone can build a public works facility, or a public city. There's just not that many contractors that like to take those jobs, and they have to have the bonding capacity. Not all the contractors have that bonding capacity. And so you see a group of people that usually, you know, we use Core Law. I see them in almost every city because they have a good reputation, they provide good bonding, their workmanship is really good, and so, and are used to dealing with municipality and all the requirements we have for, you know, since we're using tax dollars, there's a lot of requirements that they have that a lot of other contractors don't have or don't want to bid those jobs.
So our qualifications are similar to neighboring cities, or do we have a unique type of qualification list?
They're, they're similar based off the types of projects. So when we put out a request for qualifications, we have a scoring matrix. And so our scoring matrix may be different than what other cities are.
Okay.
Because we have different needs and we have different expectations, so we create our own scoring matrix, and that's how we base the scores of the selected firms off of that qualifications list.
Why don't you explain what's in that scoring matrix?
So, so there's, there's different categories, and for civil engineering firms, one example may be if they have an in-house survey crew. So a lot of full-service civil engineering firms may not have a survey crew, and so we score them higher if they have their own survey crew in-house because a lot of times when we need to send a survey crew out to get some data collected for us, if they have to call a third party or sub, they may not be able to control their schedule or their time, and we want them to be able to react in a quick manner. And so having them have their third-party survey crew in-house allows us a higher reaction time for us to get our data that we need. Another example is proximity to Capel. We don't want a firm from New York, because we get those sometimes, want to do work for us. Well, they've never been here, they've never, they won't travel here. We need someone that's nearby, and so we score, the closer to proximity, we score them higher than, than maybe some of the others. And then we also look at their culture. Part, part of, of the professional qualifications is, is the culture of their, their company, and if it's in line with what our culture is, that, that score is better, higher as well. So there's, there's about 15 to 20 different categories that we score on a basis of one to 10, essentially.
John, then, Ramesh.
Thanks. Great presentation, as always, Mike. So on the construction manager at risk approach, is that novel in the industry? Is that novel to Capel? Is that something we've recently started doing?
It's, it's, so in the, in the past probably eight to 10 years, we've had some new facilities being constructed. And so for us, it is somewhat a new approach for in-house, for, for that, but we have used it. It's, it's, it's been around for many years, but, but for us, it's, just because we've had some new facilities come up that are complex, they're above our level of expertise and time, and so having that CMAR helps us along through the project.
Do you think for those similar types of builds going forward, to the extent we have any, that we'll use that exclusively now that we've had the experience with it?
It, most likely.
And then the other, the other question I had, I noticed on one of the consent items, the, one of the bids that we, that we accepted was the lowest bid by far out of the three. I apologize, I don't remember which project it was.
The town center remodel.
Do we, I mean, you know, there's always the old phrase, penny wise and pound foolish. The lowest bid isn't always the best bid. Do we, how do we evaluate, is this low bid a regular bid or, I mean, a reasonable bid? The others were just unseasonably high? How do we monitor to make sure we didn't get what we pay for at the end of the day?
There's, there's several ways that we, we look at that. One is, is prior history. You know, if it's someone that's consistently low bid and we've used them and we're comfortable with them, and that's, in this case, that's what's happened, is we've used this contractor before. They've, they've always come in relatively low, and we've been satisfied and happy with the work that they've done. There's other times, for example, we had a project where we'd never heard of the contractor that bid on it. They were the low bid, we'd never heard of them. We checked the references, we called, we called several other cities that they've done work with, Great Mind being one of them. And so we make sure we get good reference checks on their, on their work history. And so then we feel comfortable enough to, to accept their bid. There, there are some stipulations on how to throw out a bid, and it's not as easy as just because we don't like them kind of thing. It's, there is, there is some work that would need to be done if, if there was a bid, a low bid that we wanted to throw out. And there's things that we have done before for that, but it's rare.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Very apt for me, starting on the city council. My question, I'm trying to understand, are there folks that use, abuse the change request process? How, how do we?
You're talking about a change order?
Change order.
Change order? Um, you know, in our experience, we have, we, we are fortunate that we have a good staff of project managers and inspectors that stay on top of the contractors. And so there are times where we do have change orders, but it's mostly related to change in field conditions or scope that may be unforeseen. And so a lot of times that's what happens, is, is things that, we go out there, we design, we survey, we do all the design we can do, but then when we start unearthing things, things pop up that obviously we couldn't see. And so a lot of the times, our team manages the contractor very well, that we don't have that many large change orders beyond our control.
Thank you.
Ramesh, in, in public work, whether it's schools or municipalities, the last thing in the world that the contractor and the architect want to happen is to go back to council or the school board and ask for more money. So oftentimes, when they're encountering a potential change order, they figure out what they can do to mitigate the cost and, and offset it so it doesn't have to go back in front of a city council or a school board. So they lay the work as a team to resolve those issues, because there's nothing more embarrassing than going back and asking for more money. Now, like you said, there's unforeseen circumstances, and, you know, they'll come back.
There's actually a question on the professional engineers' ethics that we have to take every year that talks about the, the contracting, that you can't bid out a engineering and architectural job. And they always phrase it so that, you know, they try to entrap you in, in not understanding the question. And I had to have one of our previous council member who was a mechanical engineer in the, in the public domain explain it to me. And it all, because in the, my world, the electrical world, we rarely run into that. But it, it all had to do with safety and not wanting to bid down for a safety job. Mike, could you go back a couple of slides? I may have misread your, your, I think it was your very first one. No, that one. This one. Oh, no, there it is. I missed the word qualified bidder. I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Okay, I'm, I'm good. Don?
This is more of a process question, just to make sure, because the, these big projects, they sort of come at us in, well, like the Hall of Justice over there or whatever we're doing. There's a lot of things going on for like a year, right? So the process basically is, so you get together, you get together sort of an idea of what the project would cost initially. And what are the, like, a year ago, when we, you know, came up with a, I don't know what the number was, a million dollars for the police station, where does that number come from initially?
So initially, during our five-year planning process, when the idea is, is more in our heads.
Yeah.
We, we kind of, so we, we keep track of all the data of our previous past projects, and so we kind of have a good idea of per square foot or per linear foot ballpark. And so depending on big picture, just ballparking, we come up with a budget number.
Okay.
And then once we get into the actual detail, it change fluctuates.
Well, that's, so it starts there. That's what we see initially.
Right.
And then at some point, like tonight on the consent agenda, we had, I guess, the design contract for that project, right? A, a number of months ago.
Correct.
For $300,000 or something. And then they, they build out the construction documents. Is that what happens?
They start out with a schematic design.
Yeah.
The architect starts out with schematic design. And once they get to that point, and then we decide, yes, this is the way we're going to go, then they, we come back for the construct, select the CMAR, come back for the construction documents and put that together to go to construction.
So like tonight's, so you, those two contracts together, I, I think it's worded, we're amending the design contract with.
The original contract, yes.
With, with an added construction piece, right? And so those two together.
Is the total.
Would be the total of the project. Okay, I was just trying to, because they come piecemeal over a long period of time.
And they are different from public works projects that are, to me, are a little bit easier and straightforward because there is not a lot of flexibility versus the facilities-type projects where we do have some options to do and different ways to do it. And so they're a little bit more complex.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, understand the process, because it's, because it is such a long period of time that we have to remember all these things.
Mark?
Yeah, Bijou? I wanted to kind of put your mind to rest in terms of the fees of the architects, but the, you know, typically a percentage of the construction cost. And they're, they're all pretty much in the same range because schools talk to each other, city council or staff talk to each other, so they know what those numbers are coming in. And the, the firms know that you know. So they, they kind of self-police, and, you know, they're not going to get way out of line and charge you a 10% fee where, you know, everybody else is charging 7%, because that'll be the last job they do. You know, because everybody will know that firm is super high, we just need to stay away from it. So, you're, you're, you know, I think we're getting good value for the services that we are out there asking for qualifications, just by that mere fact.
Okay, any other questions? I now understand why I didn't understand or it's confused.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I did not, I mean, I've heard all of these processes, but I didn't understand that there was, you know, different categories that they fell into. Thank you very much for finding that.
Mike, can we get a copy of this, please?
Sure, yes, definitely.
All right, we are, we are going to recess from work session at 7:28 and start council meeting in the chambers at 7:30. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:31 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capel City Council. As a reminder, persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance must sign the register outside the council chambers and list your residence address. This evening, we have council member Don Carroll to give the invocation, and then the Capel Fire Department honor guard will post the colors and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight just thanking you for the city that you have provided for us, for putting us together as a community. We know that it is not by accident that we have all come together to live in this community at this point in time. We ask that as this meeting goes on tonight, that there will be a, a large dose of wisdom and patience that is granted to all of us, that conversations will be productive, and we will all keep in the front of our minds the good of this community that you have put together. Father, just thank you for all the material blessings and the relationship blessings that you have always provided of us, provide for us. We just ask you to be with us throughout the rest of this week. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen. name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Right. Right. Bow. Mount. Back. Back. We have two proclamations on the agenda tonight. Item number five is a proclamation designating the month of October 2024 as Fire Prevention Month, so I'd like to ask Ms. Bethany Everett, Everett, excuse me, and Farmer Shaw Oates to come forward. Ladies and gentlemen, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, with homes being the location where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas fire departments responded to more than 158,400 fires annually in the United States between 2017 and 2021, and whereas according to the NFPA, smoke alarms reduce the risk of dying in a home fire by more than half, and whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You" effectively serves to remind us that smoke alarms serve as the first line of defense in a home fire. Now, therefore, I West Mays, Mayor of the Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Fire Prevention Month throughout the city, and I urge all the people of Capel to ensure that they have working home fire alarm systems for Fire Prevention Month 2024 and beyond, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Capel's Fire and Emergency Services. Now, therefore, I West Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, have affixed my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed this day. I guessing somebody might have something to say?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for your support of this proclamation. I know we do it every year, but I truly think that that speaks our community's thirst for knowledge and awareness, so thank you again. And, and if I can be frank about this year's Fire Prevention Month theme, this, this year's theme is actually pretty personal to me. You know, I, I pride myself on being a pretty educated and, and safe individual, especially considering that's my job, and yet, a couple of years ago, I actually had a close call with a fire at my own home. But because of working smoke alarms, I was able to, you know, my family was able to, to be safe, we didn't have any loss, and our pet was okay. And so if it can happen to me, it can happen to anybody, and so that's my charge to you all, is to be vulnerable with one another, right? Chances are that incidents like mine happen to more people than you're aware of, and so I charge you to be vulnerable, have those conversations with your neighbors, your friends, your family members, and to learn from each other's experiences so that we can be safer together. And on that, I'd just like to invite you to the Fire Department's Free Safety Show on October the 24th. It's going to be at the Capel Arts Center. They're going to be performing the, the show that they do in the elementary schools all throughout the month of October, so come see us at the Arts Center, October 24th, 6 o'clock. Thank you so much.
Well, I know that these guys have something to say, but I'm going to add a little personal note. I had a couple of fire alarms in my house that started going off erratically this past year, and I started looking into them, and they were 11, 12 years old, and looking further into them, they only had a lifetime of eight to 10 years. So going in and, and actually, they were buzzing like they were supposed to, but they actually weren't detecting the fire. So I ended up replacing every smoke alarm in my house, so I hope I get some brownie points for that. So, thank you, thank you. Council member Hina Jose Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Ironically, I had the same thing happen and didn't realize it, and I think to all of those who are here watching, or here listening, as well as those who are watching, like, don't hesitate to call our fire department. They will come out and, and help you to install batteries or to look at your fire alarms, and so I think that's really helpful. But I just wanted to say, thank you, thank you so much for all you do, and especially what you do with our kids and education, just educating them and having those conversations where they're willing to have those conversations at home, and where that they're then not afraid, they're more of like, hey, this is what I learned in case of an emergency. So I know that you guys just do a lot, and just want to say we really appreciate your time, your effort, and your commitment.
Council member Prem Kamara.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Fire Department, for all the wonderful things that you do. I think your other role of being EMTs, that pretty much affects everyone, I mean, at least one person in Capel every day. I hope you have, you get a month dedicated for that as well. Thank you.
Item number six is a proclamation designating the month of October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Sandies and members of the Pink Souls in Motion might like to come forward. And just in case no one noticed, I did wear my pink shirt today, so I did that on purpose. So there we go. What's that? Ladies and gentlemen, whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to increase awareness of the disease, and whereas a woman in the U.S. has a 1 in 8 chance of developing breast cancer over her lifetime, and a 1 in 39 chance of dying from breast cancer, and whereas nearly 30% of women diagnosed with early-stage breast cancer later develop metastatic breast cancer, and whereas U.S. men make up 1 out of every 100 breast cancer diagnoses in the country, and whereas increased awareness, especially of family history and other common risk factors, preventative care, and regular screenings, including mammograms, can help save lives through early diagnosis and prompt medical treatment. Whereas through early detection improved, improved treatments are about 4 million breast cancer survivors in the U.S., including women receiving breast cancer treatment. Now, therefore, I West Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and in witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capel to be affixed this 8th day of October 2024. Before you ladies speak, I bet Mayor, or Council member Hina Jose Smith, I, yes, I promoted, might have something to say.
Yes, um, yeah, thank you all so much for being here and what you do. I know that you guys raise thousands of dollars, and I don't know if everybody knows, like, for those who are here and those who are watching, that everybody who walks in the three-day walk has to raise, is it still $2,300?
Yes.
$2,300 to walk. And so the fact that you guys not only raise that, but go above and beyond, and do the 60 miles, which is not easy, and it, it takes, I see y'all walking, I see y'all training, it takes a lot of time away from your family, a huge dedication and commitment, and so to each and every one of you, and those who are not here today from the team, I personally want to say thank you for going out there, because I struggle right now physically and can't do the walk, and so thank you for doing it. For those who have lost their life to breast cancer, those who are currently fighting, and, and, and those ahead who aren't even detected yet, and yet I hope that someday there is a cure to that horrible disease. So, thank you.
Sandy, did you have something to say?
Sure. I am this year's president of Pink Souls in Motion, so we just kind of wanted to let y'all know, some of y'all probably heard this story before, but, and we'd like to say thank you to everybody in Capel who have very much supported us for a long time now. We came into existence in 2006, and in 2011, we actually became a 501(c)(3), so that we could benefit people going through cancer in other ways, other than just the Susan Coleman way, but in our lifetime for Susan Coleman, we are more than 2.5 million in, over 200,000 this year for our team. So, we also do, we also do grants for people who are going through can, cancer treatment, and we also donate things to cancer centers to help them with their treatment, to help facilitate their treatment. So, we would like to encourage everybody to be aware of their body, and thank you so much for talking about the men, because it's not just the women, it's everybody. You have to pay attention to what's going on with yourself, and don't hesitate to get things checked out if you feel that something is not right, because we really have come a long way, and people are recovering and, and even living with cancer nowadays, but you have to catch it early. That's important. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think Sam is going to get a little photo, so you, you ladies want to move around?
All right, three, two, one, a couple more for the families back at home, everybody. Spectacular, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number seven is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register, register outside the council chambers and list your address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each, and individual, and individual speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Record Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and make the request of the mayor and the council if they would like to extend the speaker's time. We do have three people signed up to speak tonight. First on the list is Mr. Jim Mayo.
Good evening, Councilor Mayo, Mayor.
Thank you.
Jim Mayo, 150 Maywood Circle, and I just have a little, something I want to make people aware of if they're watching this. I'm a investor property owner, and recently I sold a property, and I went to shut the utilities off, the water, and I had one week on my billing cycle, and I was billed for the entire month. The water department told me that they don't prorate water, and I called the buyer that bought the property to see when his utility was turned on. It was the day after I turned mine off, and I wonder how that could not be double billing, or is it a money grab with the city? That's about all I got to say. I was surprised that I couldn't prorate the water bill. All other utilities are prorated. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out and speaking tonight. And second person on our list is Mr. Thomas Burrows.
Thomas Burrows, 138 Winpage. I brought a list. Just as a comment, you know, I was born three weeks early because there was a car accident in the front yard of the house that my parents lived in, and there was a fire, and the house caught on fire, and the volunteer fire department didn't know where the, the street was. My mother got half of a new house out of that. And I did a, a citizens' fire academy in another town 25 years ago. At the time, they told us, and this might not be true today, that there's not been a single person in the United States that's ever died in a house fire, that the house had a sprinkler system in it, but yet the real estate people all say, oh, that's too expensive, you know? Other than 2,300 people a year die in house fires. You know, I, I applied for a, a committee or a board, and the city administration sent unknown to me what was in these documents to the application, to the applicant, committee group application. The link sent by the assistant city manager didn't work, and anyway, I have, I have had the police come to my house and accuse me of stealing from a parked vehicle in front of the Tom Thumb parking lot, when the video clearly showed all I did was walk by the vehicle. And so somehow, Capel EMS got lost while we're transporting a family member to a hospital. EMS vehicle ended up inside DFW Airport, et cetera, et cetera. A 17-minute trip turned into 57 minutes. This will be the third time that I've replied, reported streetlights out on Sandy Lake West owned by the city. What is the liability of the city for having streetlights that don't work? The streetlights on the bridge of Sandy Lake West by Park still remains busted. Most of the streetlights on the other city-owned bridges are blocked by limbs. The Methodist Church administration personally told me that they didn't have to mow their lot on Van Bevere.
Mr. Burrows, your time has expired.
I'm not sure.
The time has expired.
I know, but I'm not sure. I've got more things to report here, because obviously, when I turn them in to the city, nothing happens.
Your time has expired.
Okay. But I'm here, I'm here to tell you people.
Mr. Burrows, this moment, would you like, would you like to request an additional two minutes?
That would be nice.
Council, all in favor of allowing Mr. Burrows an additional two minutes?
Okay. I'll keep this quick. The car wash on Van Bevere's behind the Shell Station on Denton Tap has high grass. The drainage ditch, or whatever it's called on Sandy Lake East at the corner of MacArthur Boulevard needs to have the dead trees cut out and the vegetation trimmed back. The five dead trees at the CVS on the corner of Sandy Lake East and MacArthur need to be cut down before they fall on somebody. At the corner of Beltline and MacArthur Boulevard, the drainage culvert is, is clogged. I'm, I've lost track with how many times I've turned this in. I think if we had a massive rain, five or six inches, we would have a flood, a car goes out of control, you know, somebody gets hurt. The west side of Denton Tap going south on, on the street, Denton, on the street of Town Center needs trimming. The west side of Denton Tap going south before the railroad trucks needs trimming. The area by Beltline by Chase Bank needs mowing. The area east of Beltline cornering Dividend needs remowing. It's the previous job, did not cut down all the huge weeds by the sidewalk. The, the sidewalk east of Beltline and south of Chase Bank needs to have slims cut back. The island median that sticks out beyond, on 2635, I'm not sure who owns that, if that's in Capel or Irving, wouldn't, it needs mowing. The Firestone, the area by Firestone, south on George Bush Freeway needs mowing. The plot of land that backs up to your house, Mayor, needs to be mowed. I sure hope you got a sprinkler system on top of your house or something like that, you know? On Sandy Lake West, there is, on the north side, there's a half-built fence that's out of code per regulations for fencing for the city of Capel. I'll turn this in for you guys.
Pass along to Ms. Owens, please. She will see that the council gets copies. Thank you for your comments tonight. Our third speaker is Mr. Alex Stein.
Hey, guys, I just want to start off by saying, everybody here, give yourselves a round of applause for being here. Yes, you guys are the important people. We really appreciate it. And, you know, what's going on in the world today is absolutely insane. We have the upcoming 2024 presidential election.
Excuse me, could you please give us your name and address?
Oh, it's, it's Alex Stein, 7509 Inwood Road. You guys are all welcome to come over and party, have some Coors Lights. We don't drink Bud Light in my family. But, no, a lot of people are talking about the election that's coming up, and a lot of people think that Kamala Harris did some sort of coup to make Joe Biden step down. That's actually not true. Once Joe Biden got COVID and he realized that he couldn't smell little kids anymore, then he realized, what's the point of even being president, right? Is that, he goes, okay, well, you know, we live in a crazy world, like, there's a lot of, a lot of racism, which I'm really against. You know, a good friend of mine, Charlie Kirk, I don't know if you guys know him, but he recently got some hot water because he said that he would be hesitant to get on the plane if he noticed that he had an African-American pilot, which I have a different opinion. I love when I see a black pilot, because that means you can smoke weed on the plane. All right, well, you know, a lot of people are talking about the schools. You know, I actually was a school teacher, and I got fired for teaching critical race theory. I took the kids on a field trip. The first mistake I made is I didn't get parental waiver signed, but the second mistake is I took them to a plantation, and I made the white kids pick cotton to try to teach them that they should be guilty for, you know, something they didn't do. But I got fired for that, which is ridiculous, and like, there's a lot of people in the conservative community that are anti-trans, like, they're saying that we should limit transgenders in women's sports. I don't think we should, guys, because we can gamble on transgender- guys, because we can gamble on transgenders and win money, guys. I won enough money from Leah Thomas, I turned draft kings into draft queens. That's so much money, right, Don? You like that? But the last thing is, there's too much trans hate. Like, right now, a lot of conservatives are getting mad. They say that they don't want transgenders in the military. I disagree, because I think that transgender should be great for the military, because, one, they're the meanest people in the world, and, two, they're the best at doing mass shootings. So, you guys agree with that? No? Can we get two more minutes?
Your time has expired.
What is that?
Counsel? Sorry, sir.
No, you guys didn't like that bit. You guys are a tough crowd. You guys are a tough crowd. It's hard. I'm out here grinding, Mayor. You guys can't, all thumbs down? You look like a ghost. Look, did you get in my camera doing the thumbs up?
Sir, your time's up.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Kevin, what the heck? Kevin, you don't like comedy? You guys don't like jokes?
All right. Item number eight on our agenda is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in a single motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. We do have a request to remove item C, so we will be considering items A, A, B, and D through J. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions about any of the items on consent? We will be considering C separately. Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Counselmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number eight, A, B, D through J.
Thank you very much. And seconded by Counselmember Walker, all in favor?
Walker, Hina, Hosea Smith, Carol Neville, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item number C is consider approval to purchase four Harley-Davidson police motorcycles from Maverick Harley-Davidson for replacement of existing vehicles through the Buy Board Purchasing Cooperative, number 724-23, in the amount of $198,380.60, as provided for in the capital replacement fund and authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Counsel, it was your request to pull this from the agenda. Did you have any questions concerning item C?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement. I support our police officers. They do a good job. In fact, I'm one of the CPAC members, Citizens in Police Academy, so I'm all in for it. As a council member, I also have to watch out the taxpayers' money, right? We are spending almost $200,000. That's $50,000 for each bike. What I would request is, at least to have an option to see another brand name motorcycle, so we can compare and contrast to see the value that we are getting for this, the money that we are spending. Just for that reason, I'm not in favor of supporting this item. In future, I like to see options so that we can compare and contrast with other motorcycles.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other comments? Counselmember Hill?
I think we need to move forward with voting on this. These were selected from the Buy Board, and that is a competitive process. And if you're aware of how the Buy Board works, you'll understand that we're getting the best deal we can for our money. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Neville?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, in our work session, you know, I heard Chief Barton talk about these new motorcycles are, have increased safety and security measures for our police officers. I think it's important that, you know, we're providing the best possible equipment and safety features possible we absolutely can to protect our officers out on the streets. So, they do a great service for us. So, I'm definitely in support of getting these new motorcycles, because I want to make sure that we're taking care of our officers around town.
Thank you. Counselmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to point out that it's always been my understanding, Harley-Davidson, of the few manufacturers that actually make a police cruiser, because not all of them do, of course, is usually the least expensive one anyways, but it also has the benefit, as distinct from BMW and Kawasaki, is also being made in the United States. And so, it's no wonder that it's a little bit cheaper. They're not shipping it all the way across the Atlantic or the Pacific. So, I certainly support this.
Counselmember Hina Hosea Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I just wanted to add the support also for item C. Our police officers currently have Harley-Davidson, so just kind of for those who are viewing, we are replacing those four with added safety features. And knowing, kind of, again, the process of Buy Board and what we've gone through, we want to make sure that our police officers are safe. And I know that they also have looked at different options, and I'll just say I'm supporting this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any other? Counselmember Matthew?
Yeah, I just want to make sure the options are not included in our packets for us to compare with two motorcycle brands. That's all I'm saying. We like to see an option so that we can compare and contrast, because we haven't had any discussion or options presented to us through our package.
Mayor Protim?
Just a question. These motorcycle replacements, they're part of our annual budgeting process. Is that correct, city manager?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so in our budgeting process, we, you know, we could discuss the part of our capital replacement fund and what's included in that. Is that correct as well?
It is.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Actually, it's not just the annual that is part of the capital budget replacement fund, which is a 10-year plan. Counselmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item eight, C.
And seconded by Counselmember Hina Hosea Smith, all in favor?
Walker, Hina, Hosea Smith, Carol Neville, Prem Kumar, Hill in favor. Opposed? Matthew, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is consider review of Majid Hussain's appointment to the Capella Recreation Development Corporation pursuant to section 2-11-2 of the Code of Ordinances. Ms. Owens, do you have any details here?
Good evening, Mayor. This item is for you to consider Majid Hussain's appointment to the Capella Recreation Development Corporation that is pursuant to section 2-11-2 of the Code of Ordinances. So, in the ordinance, once three absences have been triggered, regardless of whether they are excused or unexcused, an agenda item must come forward to city council for you all to review the appointment, whether you want to keep Mr. Hussain on the board, or whether you would like to vacate his appointment. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any discussion? Just a little point. We did discuss this particular item some years ago, and we actually did not take action as a council on the excused versus unexcused. So, by the ordinance, there is no difference. Counselmember Walker?
Well, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that, Mayor. Look, I know all of us really appreciate the folks that step up and agree to serve on our different boards and commissions. This gentleman did have, you know, report that he would be missing in advance of the meeting, and they were excused absences. And so, absent some indication in the future that it's a more persistent problem, I would say that I'm in favor of giving him a little grace on this one and letting him remain. Is it my understanding, Ashley, that, or Ms. Owens, I should say, that Mr. Hussain wants to continue to serve?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. I would support giving him a little grace and letting him serve.
Mayor Protim Neville?
Thanks, Mayor. And just for the awareness of some audience members, so Mayor and I serve on the CRDC board as well, and so, we have not had any quorum issues or anything like that. I can report that. So, you know, those absences were always covered up. And I do agree with Counselmember Walker down there that I do think that, hey, sir, you know, I do think that a little grace, especially the fact that that was reported, absence as well ahead of time, and, you know, we were aware of those. So, I would be willing to extend some grace as well.
Counselmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to share that I've known Majid for more than 16, 17 years. He's a person with true servant heart. He's been serving on CRDC, I think, since 2019, and this is the first time he's had a problem. And like Counselmember Walker and Mayor Protim Neville said, he did report in advance that he's going to be absent. I'm glad to hear that the quorum rules was, the quorum was maintained. So, I'm in favor of letting Majid continue if he wants to.
So, Mayor Protim Neville?
I just had a procedural question. If we chose to take no action on this, do we just move on, or do we need to actually have a motion? Or if the only action required, would we need to make a motion if we wanted to remove him from the?
We need a motion one way or the other.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's why there's actually two options listed on that.
Okay.
Oh, anyway.
Then, let's say, Counselmember Carroll, I think I saw somebody down there with their hands up, so I'll, you know, I would just say, I'd like to remove to, or I'd like to move, we got somebody? Yes, I'd like to make a motion to retain Mr. Hussain's appointment.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Counselmember Prem Kumar, all in favor?
Walker, Hina, Hosea Smith, Carol Neville, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Owens.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is consider a resolution nominating representatives to serve on the Dallas and Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors and authorizing the mayor to sign. We have routinely not taken action on this. We very rarely get an applicant that has approached us to serve on the Dallas County or Denton County appraisal districts. However, we did receive one applicant, and I will let Counselmember Matthew talk to that one, if you would, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have an opportunity to speak to this candidate, Ray Martin, a few hours ago. I spoke with him, and he's been serving in different capacities in Denton County for, I don't know, you said 15 years, in different capacities. I think he's a servant, he has a servant heart. With, I don't know him personally. I just know him from talking to him about seven minutes today. So, I have no reservation, or I don't have any issues, you know? Since he reached out to us, I'm willing to support him.
So, and I, the reason I called on Counselmember Matthew is he is our representative from Denton County. Not representative, but you happen to live in Denton County, and this would, Mr. Martin would impact Counselmember Matthew more than the rest of us. Our vote in the Denton County election process is miniscule. We're just a very, very small fraction of their total population, so our vote is very small. With all that being said, I would accept a motion. Counselmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve agenda item number 10.
Specifying?
Consider the approval of a resolution nominating representative to serve on the Dallas and Denton Appraisal Districts Board of Directors and authorizing the mayor to sign.
I think if you could specifically cite Mr. Martin for the Denton County Appraisal Board?
So, rephrase, restate it? Okay. Item number 10, consider the approval of a resolution nominating Representative Ray Martin to serve on the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Counselmember Walker, all in favor?
Walker, Hina, Hosea Smith, Carol Neville, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 was a historic vote on behalf of this council. Item number 11, or city managers' reports, project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session. Mr. Land?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Before I go through the list that I have here, I just wanted to offer, for people to keep another group of people in their prayers and thoughts. In North Carolina, you know, the tragedy with the hurricane wiping out the cities that it did, there's a group of people who sometimes get forgotten that their, and their families are also impacted, and that's the public servants, the folks who work for the municipalities and the counties. The, you know, if you think about what's happening in those particular communities, take like Chimney Rock basically wiped off, you know, the valley. That's the homes of the very servants that are working on behalf of the citizens of that community. And they have to still do their job. They choose to do that job. And, you know, with what's about ready to happen in Florida, it's the same situation. You know, while the mass evacuations are going on and everything along those lines, there's somebody that has to be around to pick up the pieces and put them back together again. And so, folks who serve as public servants in communities, just keep them in your thoughts and prayers, because they, not only they're serving the people that they work for and with, their own families are being impacted at the same time. And that's a lot to put on someone's plate. I use the story as an example, not putting myself in that particular situation, but, you know, in times of, when tornadoes came through in Gainesville, Texas, I would have to leave my family behind to go to the EOC, not knowing exactly what was going to happen. So, our families are impacted by this beyond just the tragedy of what's happened about lost property. So, that's just a note to keep those folks in mind, because that is going to be years' worth of rebuilding and sacrifice on their parts. A lot of stress there. The fifth Tuesday work session will be held on 10/29 at 6:00 p.m. at the Life Safety Park. Remember, that's the evening we'll be discussing primarily Old Town. So, I know that we gave you kind of the checklist, and we did the tour, and I know the mayor sent out some questions. I think we're very thoughtful, so hopefully we'll have a great discussion that evening. Magnolia Park Trail, the first phases of construction are underway. The contractor has updated the timeline, and the project is expected to be completed by next, sometime during next summer. Grading work will begin this week. Woodhurst, the contractor is continuing the paving. All paving should be complete by the end of December. Dart will be installing the hike and bike trail at Southwestern Crossing beginning this weekend. Fire Station 5, the civil work is nearing completion, and the building work is in progress. Service Center, the construction of the new parking lot has begun. There will be a groundbreaking ceremony at the service center on 10/29, same night as our work session, at 5:00 p.m. prior to the fifth Tuesday work session. And the 635 Belt Line U-turn, which is finally going to construction, the contractor has started working on the U-turn with completion date by next summer. So, if you're up around that intersection, which some of us are on a regular basis, we know how significant that one small project and how long it's taken to get us to this point of getting construction. So, Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you very much. Item numbers 12, or as the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. So, don't forget to put on your costume and grab your candy buckets and monster mash your way to the Andy Brown East for flicker treat. This will be on Saturday, October 19th, from 9, 5 to 9:00 p.m. And enjoy an evening of trunk or treating before sitting back and enjoying a show of hocus pocus in the park. 1965 Pizza and Cheddar Wheel food trucks will be on site to keep any of those little monsters from getting too hungry. Early voting in the upcoming election begins on Monday, October 21st at 8:00 a.m. Town Center is a polling location for all Dallas County registered voters. Please check capelltx.gov/election for all time, date, and location information. One other item is Counselmember Hina Hosea Smith, and I attended a grand opening of a new business here in town, and it was Inform Diagnostics. And we, they toured us through their medical diagnostic laboratory, and their equipment and their facilities and their capabilities were very, very impressive. It was, I had no idea we had that in town. It was, it was very interesting and very rewarding to see such a beneficial company doing work like that here in town. Okay, item number 13, or public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Counsel, any PSAs? Counselmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. I know the people watching will not have seen this, but we have a Boy Scout troop here, and I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank all of you for being here tonight. And scouting was very important, important part of my formative life as a young man, and I hope it is for you, too. Thank you for being here.
And I was trying to figure out how to work that one in, and I couldn't quite get it in there, so.
I'll help you out.
Thank you, ladies, or gentlemen, for coming out tonight. There's more than just one scout up on the dais, by the way. Any other PSAs? Mayor Protim Neville?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take this time to talk about a topic that's very important to me. October is Anti-Bullying Month. It's a time for us to come together as a community to raise awareness about the importance of fostering kindness, respect, and inclusion. Bullying has serious consequences for individuals, particularly young people, impacting their emotional well-being and academic success. It's essential It's essential that we promote safe, supportive environments where everyone feels valued. Resources like StopBullying.gov provide valuable tools for both preventing and addressing bullying. As a city, I just wanted to remind everyone, let's reaffirm our commitment to stand against bullying, supporting those affected, and educating our community on the power of empathy and respect. I would ask you, join me for this month wearing orange, and together, we can create a safer, more inclusive environment for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public service announcements? Seeing none, there was no necessary action from executive session, so therefore, there being no further business. I know. I said, there was none. I've been corrected, we did not have an executive session, so there was no necessary action. So, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 8:13 PM.